Well, I guess that's it there. With that, I'll call the meeting to order on Wednesday, February 8th. First order of business is roll call and if Jeff would present the roll call. I'm not, we're not hearing the roll call. I'm not sure if Michelle doing it or not.
Okay, Alderman Cone. Alderman Ryan. Commissioner Banton.
Present.
Commissioner Boaz.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Anderson.
Present.
Commissioner Garmendia.
Present.
Commissioner Keong.
Present.
Chair Strather.
Present.
Alderman Cone.
Present.
Alderman Ryan. And you have a quorum with eight present.
Thank you very much. With that, everybody should have received the packages included in that were the minutes from last meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes if they are correct.
Move to approve, Banton.
Second Bradley.
It's been moved by Commissioner Banton, second by Commissioner Bradley. Call for vote, please.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
An abstain. Commissioner Garmendia.
Aye.
Commissioner Keong.
Aye.
Chair Strather.
Aye.
And Commissioner Anderson is going to be put down as an abstention.
Okay, and I want to be sure you had, Alderman Cone was the aye and Commissioner Alderman Ryan was not a response.
Correct.
Okay, just want to be sure.
And you have, the motion passes with seven present voting, aye and one abstention.
Thank you very much. With that, this should be a fairly short meeting, but yet comprehensive. The first item on the agenda will be Alexa. There will be a public hearing. So if you're present for the public hearing at any point, you can please put your name into the chat. We'll then respond appropriately at that time. Please, up until that point, please keep your phones on mute. If and when you're called at that point, you'll have two minutes to respond, two minutes for your comments at that particular moment. But the first item of business is going to be brought to us by Alexa. And she's standing at the podium. Good to see you, Alexa. It is all yours.
All right. Good evening, Planning Commission members and those watching. My name is Alexa Seda and I am a senior planner here with the city's planning and urban design agency. Tonight, I'm delighted to make a request for the Planning Commission to host a presentation and public hearing at a future meeting date for the draft, to review and adopt the draft final we collab plan. This plan has been underway since 2018 and is led by a strong resident committee with the support of Invest STL and Yard and Company for the West End and Visitation Park neighborhoods. Next slide, please. To familiarize you as to the planning area focused, the neighborhoods are located on the western edge of the city and are bounded by Union to the east, Delmar to the south, Skinker to the west and Page Boulevard on the north. And now you will hear a brief presentation from two we collab steering committee members, Lisa Potts and April Walker, who will inform me about the robust engagement and themes that have arose during this neighborhood planning process. I would like to iterate that this evening, we are simply making a request and not reviewing the draft final plan. And if Lisa and April are online, they will take over for a little bit.
So let's get creative.
Chairs recognizing Lisa or April at this point.
That's what you're asking for.
And Don, your mic's still open too. The podium mic's still open. Lisa Potts or April or either one of you online. I'm not showing them.
Chair, we're trying to get those right now. Just one second.
Okay. Again, while we're waiting, again, if you're going to be speaking or wanting to speak at the public hearing, that is to come for the next item, please put your name in the chat. At the appropriate time, we'll call you and then if so, you will be asked to limit your comments. Either wait to two minutes. At that point, Alexa, I see you're back at the podium.
I also wanted to mention that in the few, at this future meeting, we're hoping to also be able to host it in the neighborhood. So somewhere within the West End and Visitation Park neighborhood as a part of this request. And we have reached out to the two speakers to make sure that they have access to the Zoom and I will be hearing from them soon. About the visitation. We're having a bit of a technical issue. We're going to resend the link to the two guest presenters.
And while we're waiting, is there anything that you can possibly share with us, Alexa, or does that hold us up at this point?
I could definitely share information on this slide, but they did prepare these slides and we'd really like to engage with you as commissioners. What I will say is that we at PDA have been a part of this process since it has started. And it's been great to see the residents really leading their neighborhood plan. And I think you guys are going to see something exciting coming forward in the future.
And for the commissioners, as I said, this plan has been in process since 2018. And I did understand Alexa to claim that the community has been very much engaged in the process and has all of us always asked if the community has been, it sounds like it has at that point. And commissioners, thank you for your patience in this moment. Do you have a response from them or are we just still trying to reach them?
They are currently in a waiting room, so we're just trying to make sure that they have the correct.
Yeah.
And just resending it for in it to them.
And if, from my experience, if they got into the wrong room. And so everybody knows Jonathan will be making the next presentation that will have the public hearing tonight.
I'm going to step away for a quick second to make a phone call.
At this point, I will ask any commissioners, any open conversation or statements that need to be made. There's always opportunity for this. Jake, for Commissioner Jake, I mentioned, I know he always has something good to share with us. Or Commissioner Alderman Cone, any good things are off.
Well, I will say, Chair, that I'm very excited about this plan as this is my neighborhood. And I've been watching the planning process go on since 2018, so I'm glad to see it finally come to, come to a head here. And if we do end up meeting in the neighborhood to formally adopt the plan, I decided to welcome you all to my, my home turf.
We're all going to Commissioner Banton's house for drinks afterwards.
Exactly. Happy hour at my place afterwards.
So is the, our action here is to approve listening to this presentation in the future?
Well, yes, the, the action will be to approve a, a public hearing in which they'll make the presentation in the neighborhood and it will be the full draft. We will not be seeing the presentation at this point. So.
Is this a nor, like, finding commission, like, has to give approval for public hearings?
Yes. And, and Don can tell us the exact guidelines for the commission and PDA staff to publish on a public hearing. I had that information in front of me at some point. And of course, as soon as you want it, you can't find it at any point. But it has to be posted, I believe, 15 days, at least 15 days in advance. The commission has to approve the public hearing, just as we're getting ready to do, we've done for the second coming up. And normally, we don't have this much of a technical issue as we are today. But it happens.
Is it possible to move on to the next agenda item while we, while we wait for our speakers?
Alexa, we're trying to read your hand signals.
I was gonna say, if it's okay with everyone else, we can come back to the presentation.
How much, how much time do you think the presentation will take?
I just forwarded on the agenda, so I think maybe within the next two to three minutes, I'm going to check to make sure if they're.
But how long is their presentation?
Like five minutes.
Okay, all right. So responding to the commissioners concern, we asked the commission to give us, actually the executive director, the discretion for, for getting the specific to it all done, including as you've just heard, we'd like to be able to do this one out in the community, not here at 1520 and live and in person. So we love that flexibility and then we comply with all the advertising deadlines. And just one more check that they're not in.
Yeah. I've seen neither name Lisa Potts or April on at this point.
I mean, I feel like I don't need to hear from them to be able to approve.
Yeah, that is, that is true. So commissioners, they would be eager to tell us something, but we, you don't need to hear from them in order to approve this.
Exactly.
So somebody, somebody could move the question if you would like.
Yeah. So Alex, is Alexa available to verify the action requested?
Alexa? Hear what we just said? Or giving the planning commission the approval to move the question and approve without hearing the presentation? Okay, let's do it.
Okay, I'll, I'll accept the vote.
No, no, I'm sorry. Who's Kevin Wright? He's one of your.
The consultant, the planning firm.
Is he prepared to do this five minute presentation like this?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, let's have Kevin. Go ahead.
Okay, at this point, we'll, we'll like not have Kevin Wright, who will give us a five minute presentation on the we collab and then we'll move forward. Mr. Wright, go ahead, please. And you're muted. There you go.
Hello, good evening, everyone. We are joined by, and I believe they're logging in right now, by residents of the West End and Visitation Park who have led this effort alongside the consulting team and they were hoping to present the five minute presentation tonight.
Well, I appreciate it, but we are, we do need to continue on right now. I need to be respectful. Everybody's fine.
Okay, great. Lisa, are you here or April to present?
They're not in the call yet.
No, they're not.
Okay, I will go ahead and start and as they jump in, they can interrupt me and jump in as well. My name is Kevin Wright. I'm with Yard and Company, Urban Design and Planning Consulting for, based out of Cincinnati. We were asked about 18 months ago to embark on a process with the West End and Visitation Park that eventually became known as we collab, a resident-led planning effort for the neighborhoods of West End and Visitation Park. This plan, while it has short-term focuses and focus areas that are very specific, is also intended to guide the growth and development of the West End and Visitation Park over the next 20 years. Next slide. It does look like we have April Walker and Trina Thompson, residents of the neighborhood, if they would like to jump in and continue with the slides.
Okay, Mr. Wright, I'm going to ask you to continue, please.
Okay. So as part of our effort here, we created a resident-based project steering committee that was made up of about, of about 15 residents from the neighborhood. And one of their core components of what they wanted to see out of the plan was racial equity. And not just the buzzword of racial equity, but really as part of the core element of what we were doing for the plan. You can advance the next slide. Excuse me. I apologize, Mr. Chairman. The plan was for the residents to present tonight and I do, I, I do hesitate to plan, present their work when the plan was for them to walk us through this, these slides.
And I'm aware that Lisa has just joined.
At this point, then we, but whoever's presenting needs to continue though at this point.
Okay, great. Well, we appreciate your patience. This has been a resident-led process and it was important that they presented the work tonight, so I'm pushing back. That's the main reason why. So if Lisa is here, Lisa, could you please jump in?
Sure. It looks like you're on the phase process. So this process officially has three phases from when yard started, September 21 through January of 22. The first phase was conducting an initial analysis, connecting to the community, learning about what previous plans had occurred, what was happening and trying to understand how we move forward. Phase two was February to June 22nd. That was where we really started the testing phase, engaging the community around potential scenarios. At this point, we had had a lot of surveys, done a lot of community engagement. And this was the time where we were asking people, did we get it right? Is this what you said you wanted to do? And we're in this final phase, phase three, where we have unveiled a draft plan to the community, which you see there in that third photo. And we are at the beginning process where we're hoping to get this plan adopted by the city. So, and so I apologize, this, we had other people supposed to present and it looks like they still haven't gotten in. But we have community ambassadors in our steering committee that make up the leadership of this organization. It has been resident-led from day one. We started in 2018 with four residents actually writing and receiving the grant. What you see here in the yellow or pictures of our community ambassadors, they are residents, paid residents who are actually on the ground leading this work and responsible for engaging community. And what you see in the turquoise color in the other half of the V and the E, of the W and the E is our steering committee. Some of those steering committee members were with us from the beginning and some of them are still here today, but their role is to guide this process. Every decision that we've made from day one has all been resident-led. Next slide. So I was going to talk about engagement by the numbers. And so you can see what's on this page, but what I wanted to really point out is that in, from August of 28, from August 2018 to August of 2021, we had pre-engagement. So when we first received the grant, we did, you know, movie nights and community surveys and newsletters to the community. And then we also broke the engagement down by phase. The pre-phase, we did 100 phone calls because we wanted residents to know that we were still here. We were interrupted like the rest of the world by COVID in 2020, so there was kind of a gap in what was happening in the planning process, but we restarted. So we put out yard signs. We had newsletters go out into the community, starting in phase two. We had over 44 pop-up events at gas stations, lemonade stands, popcorn stands, things of that nature to get people involved. Also throughout the process, we were constantly checking our data to see who we were missing in the process. And when we found out we were missing, you know, various segments of the population, we recalibrated our outreach efforts and continued to move forward. So what you see in this map that's color-coded, it'll, it'll show you that we made a valiant effort to cover an entire community with respect to all of our outreach effort as well as our surveys. And I do believe April is on. Thank you, April. You are right on time for your slide. Thank you.
Okay, yes, good evening. We wanted to talk about the types of engagement and the things that we heard from this engagement. The, all of these pictures that you see on this slide have to do with our Black Healing event. During this time, we had just had the flood and people were reeling from that. Community member had been shot and killed and people were upset about that. So we did a Black Healing event, invited the neighbors. We went door to door and invited them. And the largest picture on the top, to the left, you see we did a healing circle where we had all of the children gathered in the middle and the adults gathered around them to let them know, we have your back. We know what you're going through and we're here for you. We had drums. We had the tea, which talked about their trauma events that they do. We gave out, you know, free snow cones, as well as we had a free food truck. We even had bags, which you can see in that little picture, with healing supplies inside that we gave out to our neighbors for free. Next slide, please. And on these pictures, it shows, it highlights some of the events that we put on for our neighbors. The upper right-hand corner, which I want to really point out with the lady in the red jacket, it was a street circus. They came to our drafting of the plan on November 5th and there was three ladies and they walked up and down the street with music and they blew fire and did acrobatics to draw the children in. And so they did a, an event with the children, a hula hoop event with the children. And as one of the members heard them say, when the kids were leaving, they said, this was the best day of my life. And some of the other events we see, we were, the one in the middle with the we collab event today, we were at the gas station on Delmar and Goodfellow. And at that gas station, we, on the, one of the days we were there, we, we got 65 surveys completed. And as people would drive by and they would see us standing there and they would say, you know, what are you all doing? And we would say, we are asking questions about the we collab plan. We want to get your input. Come over, come over. They would actually pull up to the side of the road, park their cars and walk back and complete the survey. We didn't say, we got free drinks and snacks, stop by, but we gave it to them once they came by. As you can see, we had the, the event down in the left-hand corner on the bottom. We would do lemonade and, lemonade Wednesdays, where we would go to neighbors' streets and we would sit, set up a table with lemonade and cookies and invite them to come down and fill out the survey. Talk about what they want to see in the neighborhood, what they like about it, what they don't like, what they want to see happening. And at this particular event, this was my first lemonade Wednesday, three of those neighbors became community ambassadors from that one lemonade event. So people were interested. They cared about what's happening in the neighborhood and they wanted to get the word out to others. All of these things that we did, all of this feedback compiled to go into the development of the plan. Next slide.
Hey, April.
Yes.
If I'm April, it's Jake. Sorry for interrupting. I apologize if I'm breaking decorum, but I want to make sure that everyone understands where, this is not the, this is a vote tonight to present the full plan at a future planning commission meeting. And I'm seeing we're on slide of 14 of 37 here, so I want to make sure we're not presenting something that's going to be represented.
Oh, no.
For the future. Is this, is this is a separate presentation you all have?
Yes, this is separate. The next two slides then will be done. We only have two more slides to present.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say that this particular photo is looking west from Union down. This is our future greenway. We have a lot of greenways, potential greenways in the West End and Visitation Park area. And this is one of the focus areas that we chose to concentrate on. So this is our existing photo and we wanted to share this with you because we didn't know how many people, you know, drive through this area. But when you go to the next slide, what we want you to see is this is our vision. Yeah, this is our vision for what we want. This is what we heard from our neighbors and our residents of what we expect and what we want for our neighborhoods to look like. We want a place where we can walk and shop and, you know, meet with our neighbors and have other people come and visit. So, and we just appreciate you guys taking the time to allow us to present. Clearly, there were some technical difficulties with this meeting. We've been on this call since 4:45 waiting, well, since 5:15 waiting to get in because we were so excited to present this plan. And so again, we apologize for any technical difficulties of us not having the proper link, but we appreciate you allowing us to do this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll be here for questions.
Okay, well, at this point, Lisa and April, I'll let you know, thank you for your, your participation. I'm going to take somewhat of a, a privilege here as chair. The real, the ask of us right now is simply to approve the public hearing meeting. I don't think, believe it requires questions from the committee, from the commission at this point. So we appreciate what you've done. I always like any plan that has, that has neighbors involved, that has the community involved. And we know that one of commissioners is a member of your community and he's already spoken very highly of the action and activities that have taken place. So with that, I'll entertain a motion from the commission if there are no questions.
Move to approve the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Banton, second by Commissioner Garmendia. At that point, call for vote.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Garmendia.
Aye.
Commissioner Keong.
Aye.
Chair Strather.
Aye.
Motion passes with our present voting aye.
Thank you very much. So with that, we will defer to the PDA staff to schedule and do all the appropriate scheduling announcements for a public hearing at that time. We'll get to hear April and, April and Lisa's great presentation with enthusiasm and smiles and all the, all the facts and others that come with that presentation. Thank you very much, ladies, for your presentation and thank you very much, Mr. Wright, for your engagement with that. Moving on, at this point, the next item is going to be presented by, by Jonathan. It will call for a public hearing. I'll simply say, as we normally do, if you're going to speak or want to speak during the public hearing, I ask at this point that you place your name in the chat. When appropriate, we will then call those names at that time. We ask that any comments or concerns or support will be limited to two minutes, but the commissioners will also have their opportunity to engage. With that, Jonathan, I will now turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening and good evening to all the commissioners. I am Jonathan Roper, a city planning executive of neighborhood planning with the city of St. Louis's Planning and Urban Design Agency. And tonight I have the privilege and pleasure of presenting to you and a petition for rezoning for two parcels. That two parcels that are 2.8 acres in area and Cool School neighborhood. They're addressed at 1506 South 7th Street and 1525 through 29 South Broadway. It's the entire city block of 367. Also, in addition to just not the rezoning, but the project as a whole, there's a parcel just to the right of this property that would also be, it's under K, that would be a parking garage that the owner of the lots also would develop, but that wouldn't require rezoning, but I just want. but that wouldn't require rezoning, but I just wanted to note that that is part of the project role. But the rezoning site is a rezoning from J Industrial to H Area Commercial District for a multifamily development. And it sits in the current summer ward and the future a ward. Next slide, please. Wanted to first just give a just quick overview of kind of what's going on in the area. And this, these highlights are just different planning commission activity over the last couple of years, starting with in the blue. That was the more recent Gateway South redevelopment plan, which looks to do the innovation of the advanced industrial manufacturing, along with the entertainment and the residential. The pink to the north of that was the rezoning to the I District, which looked to take a lot of the industrial areas, JK, and a few other scattered sites, and turn it to the I Central Business District. And then we have the zoning across the street at fifteen-oh-one South Seventh Street in the pink. And then the current rezoning site, the subject site, and yellow there. Next slide, please. And so, we look at the current site, which is just Broadway Ford Trucking, so they do sales of trucks. The owner there is looking to build a multifamily development there. Slide, please. And rezone that from what's currently J Industrial to, next slide, to H Area Commercial, which in J Industrial, I'm sorry, residential is really not allowed unless at least forty percent of the block is already residential. So, H Area Commercial is the district most restrictive. That would also allow residential uses, but also the height. The reason why is, you can see on the screen, around the parcel is J Industrial, which is what the site's zone, K unrestricted. And then also you see in the orange being G, our local area commercial, local commercial district. The height on there is up to three stories or fifty feet in height. So, H is being requested because the height is, would accommodate the proposed development for the rezoning. Next slide, please. And now we'll have a tour of the sites, tour of the area, starting with the subject site. We see fifteen-twenty-five South Broadway. That's what the current subject site looks like. Next slide. And this is the, just to the east of the site, where that's the other component, that will be the future parking garage. That's not part of the rezoning request this evening. Next slide. And this is just south of the site, where we have a mix of just commercial office and manufacturing businesses. Next slide. And just to the south and the west, you have, of course, the Soulard Farmers Market and a collection of residential bars, restaurants, and more multifamily. Next slide. And just to the west of the site, you have another multifamily development and mixed use. This is actually what was zoned at fifteen-oh-one South Seventh. That was rezoned from J to G for this type of development. So, on the right side of the, the picture on the left side, on the right side of that, that's where the subject site is. And on the left side is, that's what that property to, across the street was zone G, or two G. Next slide. And this is just to the north, which is at Park and Broadway or Seventh, which is a industrial site as well. Next slide. And Steph will note also that, in looking at the strategic land use plan, so there's no adopted plan for this area, comprehensive plan, except for the SLU, so, or I'm sorry, no neighborhood plan adopted for the area, but there is the strategic land use plan. So, this plan calls for, the current site is for business industrial preservation area. Looking at using the adjacency rule to consider an opportunity area for this, for this development. An opportunity area is flexible, and the, it looks for underutilized sites where its flexibility and a type of what the future uses are, but it looks for, you know, more intense, higher uses. Mix, mix of uses are welcome there, too. In this particular case, the adjacency rule was used originally by the planning commission for the G rezoning just to the west, where the arrow points to. So, we would look to use the adjacency rule to find this into compliance with the, for the rezoning category. Next slide, please. And this is just that area where you see an existing, well, there's apartments in Soulard that was a renovation, and then here's the new construction that you saw earlier. And next slide. At this point, Steph finds that the proposed request is in conformity with the strategic land use plan by adjacency rule, though. But you recommend approval of the rezoning request, but just so after hearing from the public and and commission consideration. Also, the zoning administrator is on and as well as the petitioner. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
So, Jonathan, when are you having the zoning staff present and or the commissioner and all the?
Zoning staff is right after this, before the public hearing.
After the public hearing?
Right before.
Right before. So, so they're going to go now, and then the petitioner will go, and then we'll have the public hearing?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. So, at this point, we'll recognize the zoning staff. Commissioners will come after the public hearing. So, zoning staff, if you want to make your comments or statements now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We don't really have any additional comments.
Please identify yourself for me, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Mary Burton. I'm the zoning administrator.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Sorry. We don't really have any additional comments, just Jonathan did a good job of describing the project. We think it'll be complimentary to what we rezoned a few years ago for the development across the street. And we'll answer any questions the commission might have.
All right. We will get to those. At this point, we'll recognize the petitioner. Please state your name and your comments at this point.
Oh, sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yeah, there you go, Mr. Phillips.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Mr. Phillips?
Can you guys hear me?
We are getting echoes, but we can't hear you. You have two items on, and I'm not sure if I'm on the computer or-
Sorry, I'm not sure what's going on.
This has been a technical, technical day from here for us. While he's trying to resolve that, again, if you are here to public hearing, I would ask that you put your name in the comment chat in the chat, and we'll call you at the appropriate time, and if you want to make comments, we'll ask that you leave those, limit those to two minutes if it's fine. Mr. Phillips, we're still getting multiple feedbacks from you. Mr. Phillips? I'll give him another-
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Sorry about that, folks. I'm technically challenged, shall we say. All right. Yeah, we presented this. What we're trying to do is kind of enhance the neighborhood, follow along the lead from some of the other developments that have been put forward in that, that area. We want to kind of duplicate what has been approved and is going up across the street there. But we think this will add to the density of the city and will help improve some other developments around there for some of the land. I think it's very complimentary for the development that's going on next to the riverfront. We're basically going to add, if everything goes right, about a thousand residents to the city of, to downtown St. Louis. So, I'm available to answer any and all questions you have on it. Jonathan did an extremely good job presenting it. It's pretty straightforward, so more than happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phillips, for that. What we will do is we will open the public hearing first at this time. So, commissioners, if you bear with us, with that, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So, moved, Banton.
Second, Bradley.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brad. It's been moved by Commissioner Bad, the second by Commissioner Bradley. Called for previous roll. Hearing any objections? Hearing no objections, the public hearing is open at this point. Jonathan, I'm going to hand it over to you and the staff, because we have no, I have seen none at this point, and I don't want to close the meeting yet.
Scott, do we have any, any participants for the public hearing? Okay. Mr. Chairman, we don't have any that signed up for tonight. We had a modest presentation. I would recommend that the commissioners continue the public hearing to the next meeting, which is officially March eighth. We have time in our schedule to do that. And we'll double-check about notices and reopen the public hearing at that time. But we'd continue this item and the public hearing to further action on March eighth is my recommendation.
If I may, I did talk to all the neighbors down there, found absolutely no objection to anybody.
Mr. Phillips, Mr. Phillips.
My apologies. Yes?
Thank you, sir. At this point, with the public hearing open, it's been recommended by the PDA that we keep the meeting open, continues to make, to the March eighth meeting. Because there is already an open hearing, I'll entertain a motion to continue from a commissioner.
So moved, Bradley.
Second, Kohn.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bradley, seconded by Commissioner Kohn. Call for vote. Hearing, hearing previous roll. Any objections? Okay, with, with, with no objections, this will be continued on March eighth and held over at that point for public hearing. Commissioners at that time will also entertain any questions from this. So, that's where we are with this item next. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. With that, I'll return it back over to Jonathan to move forward with the next item that you want to deal with. We'll put this on the agenda, and we'll follow appropriate protocols for public hearing.
Thank you, Chair. The other item that we have is a delegated item that's under one million dollars, under one acre. That was just thirty-four seventeen, Louisiana. And that was the only other item that we had, and no street vacations, and I'll hand it back over to Executive Director.
I'll hear applause go out. The Executive Director doesn't have much to say tonight. But, but Jake, if you would communicate to your colleagues back in your neighborhood that we had two students present tonight from the SLU Law School, and they very much enjoyed hearing the enthusiasm from your citizen volunteers for the West End Plan. And I appreciate them coming tonight. We do have a short meeting. We'll see you on March eighth.
Thank you, Don. With that, I wish everybody to have a great Valentine. May you find somebody to love and love you. With that, enjoy Black History Month, and for those that are cheering for either Philadelphia or Kansas City, have a great Super Bowl weekend, and see everybody at work at eight AM on Monday morning. Great holiday. I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting. No comment. Artemin Kohn.
So adjourned. So moved, Artemin Kohn.
Second.
It's been moved a second. Commuting adjourned. Thank you. I'll be safe this weekend.
Thank you.
Have a good night.